Well, call to order this work session meeting of the San Marcos City Council. Today is Tuesday, February 18th of 2025. The time is 3:00 PM. Ms. Trevino, would you call the roll?
Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Ms. Saul Gonzalez.
Here.
Ms. Garza, Mayor Houston.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Mendoza and Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez.
Here.
Thank you. We have a call in person.
Okay, and for our citizen comment period, it appears we do not have anyone signed up to speak today. So we will move on to our presentations. Ms. Trevino, would you read item one, please?
Receive a follow-up presentation from staff regarding the utility payment assistance program request for proposal, use of donated utility payment assistance funds for outside utility providers, utility usage notifications, language accessibility, multifamily property needs, utility billing penalties and reconnection fees and provide direction to the city manager.
Ms. Reyes.
There we go. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today we'll receive a follow-up presentation from staff regarding the utility payment assistance program. This discussion began last August on the utility payment assistance application process, payment plans, the disconnect process, and improving utility payment assistance. In October, City Council received a presentation regarding utility billing penalties, reconnect fees, utility payment assistance, and recommended criteria for the utility payment assistance program request for proposal. Since the last update, the RFP for utility billing payment assistance has closed, and we have compiled more information on fees and penalties that we will share today. This topic is complex as any changes made to fees and penalties must be included in our rate model and will likely impact other rate payers. I will now turn it over to Director of Finance, John Locke, to provide the presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Locke.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. Thank you, City Council. Christine Avalos, the utility billing manager, and I will be sharing this presentation. So I'll begin and then she'll come in partway through the presentation.
Okay.
Just beginning with the background, with the agenda, actually, of what we're going to be discussing today. We're going to begin with a background on the City Council communication related to utility payment assistance and all the different items that we have discussed over the past three City Council meetings where we've discussed this topic. The utility payment assistance request for proposal results, using donated utility payment assistance funds for outside utility providers, utility usage notifications, and this is for unusual usage, language accessibility for our customers, utility penalties, which are late penalties, reconnection fees, and introducing the topic of multifamily property needs for non-payment of utilities. And before going on to the next slide, I just wanted to note the utility billing and collection process is a collaborative process between the utility department. And the utility department actually handles the meter reading, and Finance Department is where utility billing is, that handles the billing and collection of the revenue. Just to touch on some of the communication that has occurred that got us to this point. It began during a budget workshop on August 20th when we provided City Council with utility payment assistance application, the process for it, as well as the types of utility payment assistance that is available for residents. On September 3rd, we had some follow-up information that City Council requested. We also touched on utility payment plans, the disconnection process, and improving the utility payment assisting process. Then on the 15th of October, there was a follow-up to the third meeting, and we touched on late penalties, reconnection fees, disconnections, and city. And we introduced the criteria for the city-funded utility payment assistance request for proposal. And the last communication that we had was in a memorandum that was sent to City Council dated November 18th. And that was just some follow-up responses from the October 15th meeting. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Christine Avalos, and she will discuss the results of the utility assistance request for proposal.
Good afternoon, Christine Avalos, utility billing manager. With the utility payment assistance, RFP, City funds the utility assistance. We provide $150. It's budgeted annually. The, we also have funds that are donated by utility customers of the city, which is currently about 45,000 that we have. There's only a small amount of the annual city-funded budget that's used. The current average bill for customers receiving utility assistance is about $176.14. And our current agency that we use is Community Action, and they process the applications, and they use their fundings first for state and federal grants, and then ours are used. The funds are not being utilized, the funds not being utilized, being addressed through. We have done increased advertising of the program. We've revised the utility billing customer service script. And then we have also gone out for RFP to reach out more customers. Under the RFP, we issued that on December 2nd, 2024. The original deadline was January 9th, 2025. And then the deadline was extended twice due to lack of submissions. The RFP notifications were sent through bid announcements, cable channel, social media, direct communication with area agencies. And then we held a virtual, non-mandatory pre-proposal meeting on January 29th to address questions. And then the final deadline was on February 6th, 2025. The evaluation criteria was agency responsiveness, accessibility, completeness of response, implementation of the program management, price proposal, and local presence. We currently have an agreement with Community Action. They did not respond. However, they did request a change to the billing method. We did receive three responses from business and community lenders, BCL of Texas, Salvation Army, Communities and Schools. Under the recommendation award, we recommend that award funding to Community Action, the current provider with a different amount, and then award funding to the three respondents based on proposal scores. First contract period and funding amount will be prorated through September 30th of 2025 to keep the contracts on the city's fiscal year. These are the agencies that we have listed along with Community Action of the proposed amounts that we are asking for recommendation to be awarded to them. The first one, you'll see Community Action at 40,000. Second one, BCL, 33,000. Communities and Schools, 30,000. Salvation Army, 17,000. And that is the 120,000 that is budgeted annually.
Is this based on what they requested, what they felt like they needed to serve?
No. These are numbers that we were working on between, on our team to see what we could disperse out to the different agencies. Now, we have had a discussion with Community Action that they were asking for an award of 30,000. That would be better suited for them to be able to work that for us.
And by better suited, was that related to a lack of capacity or?
Yes, based on the amount of staffing that they have, they feel that they would be able to distribute the 30,000. They would, they would be able to work with that better for us to get that, this funds out.
Because currently, there are funds that we allocate to them every budget year that are not distributed. And so this is, this is a way to really make sure that the funds that are intended to help with utility payment assistance, because they use their federal application, and those monies go first before they dip into the city's monies. So they'd be able to use the federal money, and then the city money would be the 30,000. So just to clarify that. And no, I appreciate that because I went back and watched all of the hearings from the time, from the inception of this issue being brought forward. And lack of capacity was one of the things that kept being mentioned by various members of my colleagues. So for the four total organizations that we have on the screen, and the award amounts, were these organizations approached after the award amount was announced to verify if they have the capacity?
Well, and the, during the RFP that we presented, that information was gathered as far as the, we presented the criteria and, you know, how, how they would utilize those funds to be able to work them for us. So, for example, one of the organizations gave us like a three-day turnaround time. Another one gave us a week turnaround time. Currently, our agency that we have, they take a little bit longer, but it is due to staffing and then their general application process that they have. I mean, they're not just approving them for our, our funds here. They're doing, you know, CAPP and, and all sorts of other process on the application.
Did they request a certain amount, though? That's what I wanted, I mean, because you're wanting to know how were the amounts determined? Kind of, so did they request a specific amount that they felt like they had the capacity to kind of turn around, Christine?
We, we only had one that gave us a dollar amount, a higher amount. This is, this is a discussion that we had internally so that maybe we could utilize all the agencies so that we could have more of an outreach of not just going with one.
And I guess the reason I ask the question is because, you know, if I was one of these organizations, was interested in the RFP, and then I'm, you know, notified that this is the award amount I'm receiving, is there still an opportunity in the case of like, oh wow, I'm in over my head on this? Can we bring the amount down? Like, is this, is that still, are those conversations that we're having?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. That, yeah, that was the only reason.
Okay. And then.
Oh, I've got more questions.
I was gonna, if, if council were to agree with the award amounts, and whenever you provide that direction, then the next step would be, obviously, that we would need to bring a contract. You know, so we would have to enter into a contract with each of the agencies. And so we would then discuss the specific deliverables and all those things around that.
Yeah, but we haven't seen their requests, so I don't know what they asked for. So I'm kind of, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm working with, with this.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify that one item. We didn't ask for a particular amount in the request for proposal, so we didn't receive a particular amount from the agencies of what they asked for. As Ms. Avalos did point out, Community Action did say that all they can really have their capacity for is 30,000. And, and so the, the amounts were allocated just based on their proposal scores. We, we use the, the rating criteria that, that she shared on the previous slide. And then based on how each one of these three scored, that is how the total funding was allocated between the three.
Okay. And of course, we haven't seen that for the agencies, correct?
Correct.
It's not in here. Okay. So Community Action said 30. He gave them 40. We've got two, BCL Texas and Communities and Schools, which I'm not aware has been providing utility assistance, getting the next lion's share. And then we've got Salvation Army, who's been doing it for years and years and years, and gets a lot of requests, getting the lower amount. So help me understand what the methodology was for that.
Do you recall what a particular?
If it's later in the program, I'm, I'll wait.
Good afternoon, Teresa Perez-Carry, Community Resource and Engagement Coordinator. Really, one of the things, if we could go back, one of the things that the committee talked about was accessibility. And so based on the proposals that were provided to us, BCL came with an outreach plan in ways that they would be looking to communicate with community members as well as community and schools. And then Salvation Army would continue with their current parameters of eligibility. And so that played a role in some of that conversation.
Okay.
And then to clarify, we'd initially said 40,000 with Community Action, and that was a rough average of previous years. And so since then, we've had recent conversations, and that's where the 30,000 change came.
So we need to change that to 30?
Yes, ma'am.
So that leaves 10?
Yes, ma'am.
And of course, it would change the other also. Okay. So when will that determination be made?
That's part of, and the very last slide for council direction, that's one of the things that we'll be asking for.
All righty then.
So I had a question. At any point during their, I guess, applications or proposals, whatever, did any of them, like, give any details as to what their application process is for the consumers? Because I know one of the complaints that I've heard with Community Action is that when a consumer goes in, they want them to apply for all kinds of state and federal assistance when all they really need is to pay their electric bill that month. So would the other three providers have an easier application process, or do we know that?
That was part of the RFP request. And so with BCL, they would be creating a new one and be willing to co-create with us. Community and Schools, you would have to be a part of their caseload already. And then Salvation Army would continue using their current eligibility and application process.
And that very reason is why we're even here doing this, to see if there are others who can move faster than what Community Action could do. Because sometimes it's two and three weeks, simply because of the application that they use and, and other factors. And so it was who can get some of this money out faster? And, which I brought up and others have agreed with, that's why we're even here having this discussion. So you're on the right track.
And when I mentioned accessibility, right, like, one of the proposals said a three-day turnaround. Another said sending out pledges every single week. And so we were sensitive to that in, in our conversations.
Okay. Right. So then, none of the 10%. We have appear listed that there would be an administrative fee of 10% that gets paid to the agencies. But none of that will come from the utility assistance, or I'm sorry, excuse me, the utility donations that are made by customers.
Is this something that they needed? Did they ask for this, or is this something that we're offering?
This is something that we're offering. This, this came up from one of the previous presentations that was, that was done for the utility donation, the 45,000, of wanting to use it for other utility providers, such as Pardinalis, Bluebonnet. So we would need one of these agencies to use those funds to.
Well, I was talking about the administrative fee.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So for me, I'm seeing that's 10% that's not going into helping people pay their bills. So I'll, I'll look at that again later. Mr. Gonzalez had a question a while ago.
Well, thank you, Mayor. My question is, the community and schools, how is that spent? The money that they're going to get, 30,000 or whatever it might be?
How is it spent?
Yeah. Is it?
Well, they'll, I mean, they'll do their application process, and it'll, it'll be towards the utility bills. So I guess I'm not understanding.
They don't do it now, so.
I, I think what he's asking, though, are like, basically, who are their clients that would be, they'd be working with? And so my understanding is the intent is that they'd be working maybe with the parent liaisons at the schools that know that there might be some families struggling to pay their bills. And so that's, that's who would be the clients that they would utilize.
Okay. Thank you.
And we may find people that we're not finding otherwise.
Right.
Through, through this, this method.
And these people that we're talking about, do they have to go through all that red paperwork as well?
Well, that was the goal with this, is we were trying to cut down. Because with Community Action administering, they have the one program, the one application, because that's what they're able to have the capacity to do.
Right.
Under this new grouping that we're talking about here, these other agencies, that was the goal, is that then they could have more streamlined applications so that it wouldn't be something that would be as.
Which Salvation Army has.
Exactly.
And so as they, they, Communities and Schools and BCL create their application, will we be overseeing that to make sure that they don't go, oh, here's a cool one. Let's just use a Community Action one, and we haven't solved the problem?
Have we, there's, has there been any discussion about us just creating one application and saying, here's the application? Just so that there's some consistency with that?
Even better idea.
I mean, that, that could be, you know, we could get just basic information. So that's something we can look at offline.
But I'm thinking if we just were to create the application, make it be as simplistic as we need it, and that way, they would then use the same thing.
Yeah, that's something we can discuss with them, because we did provide the criteria, and they were willing to work with us on that.
Yeah. And my, yeah, and my other concern is with two organizations that aren't doing it now, I can see maybe the administrative fee, because they've got to add some stuff. But Salvation Army's already doing it. And that they're getting applications and, and having to say no at times where this will be enabled them to say yes. It's not more work. So.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
If I may add one thing, with community and schools, this would be a part of their, oh, where'd the acronym go? Student and Family Assistance Program. And so they have already been providing utility assistance of upwards of $6,000 is what they shared through their proposal.
And what's the source of that? I, I, we can talk about that later. That's okay. All right, so they already are doing it. So again, there's no additional. Okay, I'm going to ask that question later. Please continue.
So I have one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One more question about the administration fee. So on the presentation, it says allowed admin 10%. Have all four of them stated that they would utilize the full 10% as an administration fee? Or is there any chance that any of them would not utilize the entire 10%? And would not have that conversation?
All of this is still being outlined.
Okay.
Let me ask that a little differently. Can this, can they be awarded the dollars and told you could use up to 10% as administrative fee if you need to? And if they don't, then it can go to? I'll ask that question later.
Yes, absolutely.
Did you have anything else, Ms. Gonzalez?
I think that's it for now.
All right, great. Please continue.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead. Oh, didn't know you had joined us. Okay.
Um, when we're talking about the 10% administration fee, what type of reporting is going to be required from the nonprofits? When we say they're, you know, they're already doing this. I mean, yeah, they're already doing it to the capacity that they like budgeted the amount for. So I imagine they would have expenses like further marketing or, you know, designating staff time to be checking into the numbers and stuff like that. So, and also reporting, right? So reporting takes, takes time. Is it like monthly reports or like how, what's the requirement to track the progress for each of the nonprofits?
We're going to request monthly reporting of the applications that are approved and denied.
And like the, the reasons, yeah? Because I know that's something that would've been.
And one more question. This is still for folks who are in the, in the city limits who are on. Well, actually, we have people who are on SMU who are not in the city limits, I think, maybe. But this is for SMU customers? Is this for anybody in the city limits who may be on a different provider? If you're getting to that later, let me know, and I'll wait.
Yes, this, this is for the city funding. We, in the last slide, we incorporated the donated funds, which that's the utility assistance that you'll see on this, on the stubs where the customers can make that extra money payment. And so the two of those are lined out here so that the agency can process the application for city funds and then donations.
We haven't made that decision about the donated funds. As a matter of fact, we said we weren't going to for the previous funds because people thought that was going to SMU and that the wording would be changed for future.
Correct.
And that those future funds could be used for non-SMU utilities.
Correct. So we would use the money that is currently available, that council has allocated for SMU customers, in-city customers, or just SMU customers. So we would be able to do that with these funds. And then any future, there is some language that we have approved to go on the bill for future. And they are working with, and that'd be part of the second part of the presentation, but they are working with the other entities, Bluebonnet and PEC, to develop their, their process for when there are people who are needing some help with that.
But what that means is like, for example, I think you said community and school, communities and schools have already spent like 6,000. Then if they just keep up with it, and our money goes to the SMU customers, and if they have people who are Bluebonnet or PEC, they can use that other less restricted money for those customers. So it's not like they're going to be without. It's just they're going to have to keep up with.
Having it separate.
What's what. And the, and the communities and schools will have to keep up because a lot of people in school district are not in the city. So that's a question that's going to have to be verified on the application. Okay.
And on the reports.
Thanks for helping me think that through.
Yeah, and, and on the reports.
Yeah.
On the, on that reporting component, though, you said monthly? That y'all will receive those reports? Is that going to be accompanied with some sort of, I mean, because I imagine the rollout is always the hard, one of the hardest parts. Is there, considering there's multiple organizations, is there something, a plan in place to also meet with them on a routine basis? Whether that's, I mean, I imagine monthly may be difficult, but maybe even quarterly, to really gauge, you know, on-the-ground perspectives on how these things are actually working in place?
Yes. That, I mean, that would be important, especially with receiving the monthly reports, and we can review them. And then if there is a question of the funds not being utilized, asking, you know, if they are, what they're doing for their outreach, what do they feel? You know, why, why they don't have customers coming in to their agencies so that whenever we have the contract that expires, if it's more beneficial to the city, to move those funds to a different agency because they're having more luck with helping, you know, customers that, that we do that. But it, it would be good to probably do that like on a quarterly basis.
Is that how often we meet with Community Action?
Community Action, they will send me the reports, and I'll, it's, it's mainly through follow-up, through email of asking, you know, how come our numbers are low? But because we've been with them for so long, I mean, that correspondence is mainly through email that we do that communication.
Okay. The first bullet here is saying something that I don't remember we decided, and I just talked about it, and you agreed with what I said, is that we did not agree that we would use those for non-city utility providers. We said future funds could be, as is talked about in bullet two. But the 45,000, we would not. I don't remember us saying that we would do that.
I know you talked about wanting to make sure people knew for future. So, yes, I think, I think the 45K was something that was going to go as part of this.
Okay.
So that would be additional funding that would go as part of, because people may have been under the impression that was for SMU customers. And so that's why the 45 would be part of this RFP process. And then any future monies would be for those others. So sorry, we didn't catch that.
Then, then maybe I misunderstood that meeting too, because I just watched it last night. And y'all's conversation was sort of around when people donate, is the expectation that they're only going to help San Marcos, you know, people who take, use San Marcos services? Or is the expectation, we're just trying to help people? And it sounded like in the discussion that y'all had on the 15th of October of last year, that that was talking about the monies that we currently have, which is that 45,000. And I think one of the suggestions was that, yes, moving forward, maybe a disclaimer for future donations does include the scope of what that can be used for. But in that discussion, it seemed like y'all were in agreeance that that applied to the 45,000 we're currently talking about.
Well, I think it's all going to work out because these agencies, if they've got other funds, I, I think the majority of their requests are probably going to be in, in city because there's not a lot of SMU outside. And it's going to be mostly SMU because there's not a lot of people on Bluebonnet and PEC. So if they've got the other money and they keep up with it, and we start seeing what those reports are, I think it's probably all going to work out. And so.
I mean, it's not like we're dipping into the 45,000 right now, anyway.
Right, but we, but we will.
But we, yeah.
Okay. Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes, ma'am. If I remember that conversation, it was that the other electrical companies, they had their own funding as well to help.
They do not.
They do not? Okay.
I think that's what someone looked up online while we were at the meeting, is neither Bluebonnet nor PEC have a program such as this. Is that correct? PEC has maybe something. PEC has maybe something, but it's not as robust as our program, I think.
Because we wanted them to use theirs.
Right.
Before we use ours.
Exactly. And you know, when we started all of this, I just for, for the audience, there wasn't, I don't believe, because this, this fund's been around since a long time. I, I don't think there was ever a decision of, we're not gonna use it for others. We didn't have any others at the time that that fund was created. And as the city has grown, we're out into other uh electric providers. But when that started, I don't, I don't think we had any. Um and so this is something that we've got to remember that we do have other providers. And um I'm gonna go back to the message board and see if we got those numbers. Okay.
Okay. Okay, um let's see. Well, I guess I will start on bullet three? Okay, so one-time donations can be made on a monthly billing statement. And as far as automatic donations, like on auto pay, we are testing that. And then uh non-city utility providers that are interested in partnering with us are Bluebonnet, Pardinalis, and Centerpoint, that we've reached out to them. Okay, and then we are working on a pro- a process to use donated funds um for the non-city utility providers. So once we do get that uh up and going, it would be, customer would submit an application through the agency. Agency processes the application. Agency will send the pledge for payment to the non-city utility provider and the city. And then uh the non-city utility provider would notate the customer's account to avoid interruption of services. And then uh the city would submit the payment to the non-city utility provider. And then, let's see. As far as the usage no- usage notifications, uh we have included on our monthly statements the importance of keeping customer contact information current for emergency contacts. Um we have that listed on the second bill, and then we have a running message on the uh message portion, portion of the first uh statement of the bill. And then our current water threshold notifications are currently available. We have those set for daily, monthly uh thresholds that customers can go into their Customer Connect portal and set those up. Or they can contact the utility billing office and we can get those set up for them. Uh we do have the software vendor scheduled to be on-site. He was supposed to be here today, but due to um some problems with the airline, um he was delayed. He will not be here until tomorrow. But we are gonna discuss with him commercial thresholds, um designated time periods uh for overnight, unusual usage, electric service uh thresholds. And then also discuss uh weather-related notifications.
Okay, and so this is if you've got um a water, you've got something that's constantly running and you don't know it. Um that if they start noticing, like if it's a business, that overnight type thing, what we're looking at is if we can monitor that. And then uh if they have provided us with an email address or a phone number, that we will notify folks, correct?
Yes.
And businesses, we're not doing it all right now, is that correct?
Correct. The thresholds that we have, they're a lower amount of the daily consumption that was built. Um so it's more geared towards residential.
Right. And can users choose one of those?
Yes, they can choose uh one or both. They can, they can do daily um or monthly, or they can choose the daily and monthly.
Cool, alright. Didn't know that. Thank you.
Okay, and as far as uh language accessibility, we have you, five utility billing staff that are bilingual. Uh the Spanish service that we provide for customers is at the counter, phone, through email. We have the connection and disconnection forms available in Spanish. We also have the account terms that are av- available in Spanish. And then the customer portal uh for Customer Connect is not available in Spanish. But a customer can uh change those settings through the internet browser for uh language translation.
Ms. Alvaro, I have a, I have a question real quick. Um and I don't know if it's necessarily on that particular slide, but it's something around it. Um in this packet, we were given a copy of the script that y'all use. Um and just so from my own ignorance, do you typically take some of these calls too?
No, I don't.
No? Okay. Um, because the question is, I understand that we are giving, we are appropriating a set of money. And it's not necessarily being used. And I don't want to make it seem like it's not being used because the need's not there. I know the need's there. So we just, we're, we're lacking something. And I know that's why we're going through this process. Um but in this script, eh, is there, I know we offer um a referral to Ms. Griselle. But is there something that we do outside of that, just to tee this up? I mean, all of, this is the first opportunity, because eh the, I watched, we give a call two days before that eighteen-day mark, correct? So by the sixteenth day, we give them a call and saying, hey, we haven't had your, we haven't gotten your payment. What does this conversation typically look like? Does it follow this script that was attached?
So if they have a customer that calls uh that's delinquent on, on their bill and they're stating that they can't make the payment, uh first thing the cus- the um representative is gonna do is they are gonna look at the account and they're gonna offer a payment arrangement to see if, if that, if they qualify for that. They will go through the script of using um, offering the agencies. We've, we've modified it to, um I know that we've had several different departments send in like a list of agencies that are out there, so they will reference that. When they're um referring them to Griselle, that will go to her if the person is needing help with um like filling out their application, or they're also asking about housing. It's not necessarily, let's transfer these over to uh Griselle so that she can go over the list of agencies with them. Okay, so um all of those things are taken in, into play as far as payment arrangements. Going through the script of offering the agencies. And um if we are able to waive a penalty because they qualify for it, then they're waiving that penalty.
So let's start with the payment arrangement. Um, is this not to get confused with that two-week extension or those things? That's the, that's the payment arrangement?
Yes.
Okay, and so by the time that two-week extension comes up, if the person cannot pay, according to that timeline we had last time, it's by what, the twenty? What, what happens after that, that point? They're expected to pay at the end of that?
They're expected to pay by the date given them, uh to them for the extension.
Okay.
And if they are not able to pay it, um what we typically do is we remind them again, you can reach out to agencies uh to see if you can qualify for assistance. Um if there is a reason that they are not able to pay it, then that call gets escalated to the supervisor or myself. Um you know, given an example, let's just say there was a death in the family. And you know, they weren't, they were out of work, so they weren't able to do that. So then that exception is made. Okay, let's go ahead and give them another week, week and a half, what they're asking for.
And I guess in your experience, um is somebody offered those typical payment arrangements more than once in a year? Or is that sort of like that leeway is only provided on that initial? I guess it only provided once.
Um it's offered every time.
Oh, every time? Okay. So somebody can continue to get those two-week extensions in the case that they're unable to pay?
Uh well, it, it, it's offered on, I'm sorry. It's offered on the initial, um if they're late, it's offered on the initial, the two-week extension. Um there has to be an exception that we're gonna extend it any, any further after that. Once they've paid, uh they've made good on their payment arrangement, eh their current bill's already on the account, then they would qualify to ask for another payment arrangement for that current bill.
So in theory, somebody could do it every month if they needed to.
Yes. And we do have some people that, that call and ask because of um social security checks.
For sure.
You know, some stuff like that. So it's consistent, if you look at their history, that they're always calling um and stating, oh, I need the two-week extension. And we grant it on there. It's, it's, it's like clockwork. So then if we have uh someone, for example, and this has happened, where they've been disconnected because they forgot to call their, their payment arrangement in, um you know, we'll get them reconnected. We look at the account. They just, I mean, they forgot that month for whatever reason that they had going on. But if you look at their account, it's consistently, they're always calling in because they didn't get their check until the, the third or the fourth or whatever day it is.
Hmm, could, if possible, I hate to ask staff for more. Um but could we get in, you know, just some data around, maybe those frequent, those people who are constantly asking for that two-week extension and perhaps if there's some changes needing to be made? Um it would just be nice to see.
Okay, I can, I can look to see.
Yeah, because if it's like a, if it's like a social security issue or those things, I mean, that's understandable. That's a delay in their benefit, you know, receiving their benefits.
Right, but if they can go to one of the agencies and get caught up, get one payment ahead, then they could be ahead for, for the rest of them.
I guess on that, though, you know, one of the things is, is when it comes to these, this, these assistance, there's uh, the programs, there's limits on how many times you can use those things. And so in the example that you just mentioned, um let's say my check comes in routinely late every month. And yeah, I can go call once and hopefully get awarded that um assistance, but what happens?
But then you've got the money that you would have paid for this one, you're instead of being. Yeah, you'd be two weeks ahead for the next one.
But that's assuming that that would be actually life-changing, though. You know, for some people, yeah, it might be a little bit money coming sooner, but if I'm already struggling.
That money's not.
You know, you're just getting me to my feet. You're not necessarily getting me up here.
Yeah, I get you. Uh but I had a question like to that scenario. Is there not a way to just change their billing date to after? You know, if they're consistently not getting their checks, say, to the third or the sixth or whatever, is there not a way we could just change their billing date to the eighth?
No, we have four billing cycles and it's all based on location.
Like.
Yeah, is that like required?
It's a thing where, say, they get somebody caught up and it really is about when somebody's benefit comes in. And we see that that's the case, and it could help if we were to change their cycle from one to four. Um so that it's not a, you know, it's not a recurring thing. Is that something that we have the ability to manually adjust?
Um, he, yes, we would have to change their cycle on, in, in the system. But I mean, we've never, we've never done that as long as I've been here, and I don't know if it's done before.
Can we check into that and get back?
Yeah, because i- in my head, which I'm pretty sure there's a lot more complex issues than y'all's, and but in my head, I mean, it's like, we're having, i- in that particular example, I mean, the customer have to remember to call every month, but then we're also having to have one of our agents take that call every month. I think it would save both the customer's time and workflow on our agents if they're not having to take that call every month from the same customer.
Yeah, like she said, eh but it's by location. If we're reading meters, there's a certain timing to it. So, but it's, it's ques- it's a question worth asking. Mr. Gonzalez?
Uh, thank you, ma'am. Just wanted to remind my colleagues to keep in mind that we're talking about water, wastewater, other trash. I don't think they, they separate it and just pay parts of it. Yeah, okay.
Ms. Garza?
Yeah, so on the script part, I heard if the customer indicates that they are unable to pay, then you start listing resources. Um is, did I understand that correctly? Or do you guys just jump into the resources? Like, does, does the listing of the resources need to be triggered by the customer saying that they cannot pay?
Um, no, they, they would have to indicate that they're not able to pay. So, um.
Oh, so they have to verbally say?
So, and if they're calling, just kind of do a role play here. Someone's, you know, I'm calling city San Marcos, hello. Um, I'm calling you about my bill. I'm not able to pay it, you know, by the due date. Um you know, what, what options do you have? What does the city have that, you know, could help me? And so at that time, then the clerk would offer the payment arrangement and then go into um the assistance, the agencies. So in another scenario, if I'm calling just to ask about my usage, uh I'm calling you to talk to you about how much consumption I have on my water or electric. I'm not stating anything about my, my utility bill because I'm just looking at my Customer Connect portal. And I'm asking, uh you know, how come, you know, have more usage here, dropped, and those type of scenarios. They're not gonna go into the utility agencies at that point because the call is not about the customer not being able to pay their bill.
Right, so I just, I wanna amplify um the conversation that we had during the ARPA money distribution. And also when we talked about um forgiving utility assist- uh utility debt. And there's plenty of research that kind of goes over um help-seeking behaviors. And just given like the demographics of our community, I think it might be helpful that at any instance, um to plug the resources, um I, I do think, I have been, I've sat next and I've made phone calls personally for neighbors. And you can just tell that they're like waiting for somebody to offer it. Um and so, yeah. And then my se- my second question is, um who, if anybody there was a part of the presentation from utilities during the university um program, because in, in one of those presentations, and I like pinged um city manager Reyes about it, a lot of the participants expressed like barriers and like patterns of barriers that they've experienced um helping their neighbors navigate utility um reconnections and assistance. Um was any of the staff that was a part of that presentation and heard that feedback, um are they there right now? Um and if so, can you give me kind of like um how you guys have responded to those concerns?
Hello, Ms. Garza. I, I don't really have a response that, that will answer your question other than when, when, uh for Finance University Night, when we provided the overview of utility billing, we did not get any kind of feedback. So, um es- especially related to, to what you're talking about. So that must have occurred at a, another university and, and not when finance was there.
I'm, I'm remembering, uh and forgive me, council member Garza, if I, if I've got this wrong. But I, I was remembering that it seemed like maybe when Mr. Yorth was talking and they were talking about, he was talking about utilities. And people don't always put those two into together, that billing is, is finance and utilities are um are separate. Um they all see it as the utilities, right? And so, Mr. Yorth, do you recall anything? But that's what, that's what I'm remembering is that it was something maybe during your part of the university.
Tyler Yorth, Director of Utilities. Um yeah, the questions that I remember from our portion of university, um I, I guess I don't have that same recollection, council member. I know we talked about, a couple of folks raised issues about um getting notification one day and their, you know, utilities turned off the very next morning. We had a couple of questions about whether or not we were turned off at uh nights or weekends, holidays. And we've all addressed all those questions, so I, I actually don't recollect. Um uh you know, if you could maybe be more specific in your question, but I don't recollect anything along those lines that we haven't already addressed.
Yeah, I think it's just uh um things like that, like their notification. So a lot of individuals, um or several of the participants um talked about how, well, no, I never got this notification or that notification. But also it, it kind of triggered a conversation around um like a very clear disconnect between the community and the, it's like city leadership on like how these processes and procedures like actually play out. Um and so, yeah, I was just wondering if anything stuck out to you from that, that you might think is helpful to share right now? But what I'm hearing is you don't remember a lot of the feedback and that, that you do remember you've addressed.
Well, I, the feedback I remember isn't getting to answer the question that you have. The feedback I remember, like I said, we addressed those, we addressed it in real time. Uh we only had one or two follow-up questions that we addressed from um uh filling out the class review forms. There was a couple of questions brought in there that we followed up on. One specific was uh one of the uh university students. I don't know what we call them. Uh university students. I don't know what we call them, so I'll say students, uh you know, asked a specific question about an address and we did go chase that down. Uh and made sure that, you know, quality of 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 customer service was what we would expect and it was. Uh so I don't think, uh other than verifying that we had the process in place that, you know, about when we would disconnect or not disconnect. Uh weather related, nights, weekends, that, and we followed up and confirmed on all of those, so I didn't have any uh open action items from that night. Happy to do so if you have something.
Yeah, I've texted the participants on a group text and so that way they could go ahead and um email city manager Reyes directly and maybe. Um I I asked him to CC me, that way we could address that and anything that kind of sticks out. Um maybe can be sent like as a council memo in the future, just kind of to make sure all those loops are closed. Cause a lot of those participants are community leaders and we, I mean, we even have one. That uh is apparently liaison and like literally works doing like helping our neighbors navigate utility assistance, so their insight is really. Um unique and valuable. Um okay, I'll I'll follow up with them and anything helpful I will.
That'd be good. We appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you so much.
So I had a question going back to the.
Hold on, just a minute. If y'all was, y'all were just jumping in with questions and we've got people who've had hands up, so since we're on. The hand feature and Ms. Rodriguez, you were next.
Thank you. Um bringing it back to the uh script. Um so thank you for the scenario, cause one of my, and I'm glad uh my colleague kind of asked what triggered. Um the delivery of those available resources. Um, cause my concern is always the people who maybe aren't necessarily at no fault of their own, literate of everything that we have available for them. And so if I'm hitting you with one of those, you call me on the sixteenth day, I haven't paid my bill yet, and I hit you with one of those, oh, it's a tough month. Is it expected of the person on the other side of that call to sort of read that? Or could we just have on the sixteenth day, that be enough to trigger the, you know? Delivery of those available resources to them? I mean, it's not like we're.
I have a question. Does the li- delinquent notice have the resources in the delinquent notice?
It has um utility, yes, we on the second, on the page, we have utility agencies. And uh we have a link to our website um where they can go and look at the list of agencies there.
Well, we don't tell them in the letter. They have to go, go to the web, which some mayor may not have that option.
The reason I ask this is because uh the mayor and I were actually in Councilmember Garza, we were, I was able to sit into uh and mine. The new homelessness committee meeting. And one of the things that was provided to people who are facing evictions. Um is essentially what the mayor is talking about, about a comprehensive list of resources. And what was basically told to us is that when you provide people those things ahead of time. It was actually helping resolve some of those evictions before they ever even got to eviction court. Because people were made aware of the resources that were available to them. And so, um. I I would just like if we can just make it a flat out, hey, this is the first opportunity somebody has to 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 be aware of. Potential delinquency. Okay, here are the resources available. Now, if we get to a point where. Resources have dwindled and perhaps, you know, we only have a certain amount left, okay, maybe just maybe not having it automatically included. But that's not where we are today. Where we are today is having to discover ways in which to get people to access or to to take these resources. And so why not just tee it up in that moment?
Yeah, what whatever it is you're telling them on the phone, when they've gotten the bill and opened it at eight o'clock last night, then they gotta remember and they're at work, then they got a call. Wouldn't it be fabulous to have those resources there in the letter and then they can address that as they can the next day? I I get that we need to be careful about who we recommend and things like that, but we can certainly recommend the four that we're giving money to. Is that something we can do?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I I think.
Well, there's 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 probably a reason why we're not doing it now and I'm thinking, is there some legal reason or something that I'm just not seeing?
I don't think it's a legal reason. I think it's just that there hasn't been that philosophy of always wanting to not people, not have people pay their bills. And us always offering the assistance to pay the bills, I think it's usually tried, had to been reserved for people who truly were experiencing hardships. That needed some help to get through those hard times, just because then it becomes a fiscal constraint.
But if we're going to tell them on the phone, why would we put it in the letter? I I I get what you're saying. But I I think there's a whole lot more value.
Talking about everybody who calls on the phone. That's where I was saying.
Put it in the letter so they don't have to call. Now, I'm not saying they can't call or shouldn't call. I'm just saying for some. They can go ahead and it would be.
What's the cost to add that? That's the other aspect is that, is there another, like, is it gonna add another page to the bill? Does that, cause that that's a consideration. Hasn't been done.
We we can fix that.
But but also, I guess. The the letter comes at what period? After the sixteenth day?
Well, the de- uh delinquency letter, it's the.
Like what comes first, the phone call or the letter?
The phone call comes two days before the due date.
Okay.
The due date passes and then we generate the delinquency letters and send those out through mail or email.
So, I know we're speaking about the letter specifically, but if we're talking about the phone call. You don't have to worry about printing services and those things and potential fiscal. And I understand the.
The letter we're sending anyway.
For sure, but bringing it to the the actual phone call, the first point of contact, right? I understand the, oh, well, maybe if we put this out there, people will maybe not pay. I don't wanna build our system on the fact that maybe, just maybe, certain people would take advantage of it, cause if you look at the federal government, they're taking advantage of a ton of things. Um, I'm just saying, like, the first time we have an opportunity to talk to somebody, maybe, just maybe, put it in that conversation. It just sounds like it would save a whole lot of people some time and money. Um it also could help us really get, I mean, we're doing an RFPs, but that's to assume that they eventually know to get there. We need to have an opportunity to send them there. Um. And it's not like these services or, you know, can be accessed more than once in a lot of these cases. It could be just that one time and somebody just doesn't know. I just don't wanna put it all on the person answering the call, cause I think that's al- also how we get to those, well, she said, he said, she said. Nobody gave me these resources on the phone. That puts more work on you, that puts more work on city staff. At least we know that if it's being done and required to be happening on that call, that's just set in stone. And like I said, that's not to say that if we get to a point where there are financial or fiscal concerns with that, where people are, you know, we're. We're dwindling down on resources available, that we can't change course. But right now, it's not like people are really, it's, that's not the scenario that we're talking about. So just being that T up is what I'm saying.
We don't design our bills. Like, we have to get with, that that's the aspect. It's 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 not like. No, 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 but the mayor said we can fix that. If we don't have enough room and we have to go to a third page, I was responding to that. We don't design our bills. And so that's something that any change we make, we have to go to them and they have to do it. So, yeah, I w- I wasn't responding to the phone call. I think that's. That's doable, that's fine. I was just responding to the letter part of it.
Yeah, cause I'm reading, and is there any way we can pull up the script that's in the packet? Um just so the public can see sort of what we're talking about and what's in place thus far. Sorry, Hayden. My fault. Um while that's coming up, yeah, because there is not, when people are able to see the script. Um aside from getting the initial information about the person. Um after the answer their questions or concerns part, it already has some sort of resources in here. So it's just a simple subsection that would be added of language, just saying, hey, here's what's available. That also gives us good press too. I mean, with people.
With us doing the phone call. I mean, the the script, we can make that whatever. It's just that how much print we put on the bill. That that was only, that was my only.
And I'm not talking about the bill. I'm talking about the disconnect notice only, not the bill.
The delinquency notice, okay. And just to clarify on those calls that go out two days before. It's not, it's not the staff calling the customer.
It's an automated.
It's an automated call.
Hmm, the other aspect that we are looking at, and I know, I I just wanna time check, cause we have not gotten through. Like a fraction of this presentation and we still have a lot of, we have another one and then three other ones. So I just wanna make sure this is great conversation and and don't wanna cut that off, but the other aspect is, is that um. We need to ensure that we're able to get through some of the the points that we have here. Um so that we can get the information that y'all want and get this moving forward. So we'll definitely take that, but the phone call, that's not a problem. We can add whatever we want to our script to make sure those resources are available. We can direct as much as we want to on the website. That's not a problem at all. Um we're also looking at other ways that we can um add notifications to customers so that if their usage patterns change and things like that. Um that was a functionality that we had before and with some of the upgrades that has um not been there. And so we're working with the with the company to see how we can get those things added back in, cause that also helps people monitor. Those things and hopefully not get their bills to a part, a point where they're just so expensive for them to be able to to pay. So those are some other things, just so, just so y'all know that those are some other things we're looking at.
And I'm just gonna call everyone's attention. We're real excited about doing this and 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 solving things. It's four o'clock and we've got a whole lot to go and I've got a lot of questions to ask you, so just, and I know I've been taking up a lot of time too, but. But we're trying to solve something that's really important, so.
Fifteen seconds, that's it. All I'm saying is anywhere between A and B, subsection A, B, or C, just putting something in there on that au- automated call. Just telling people what those resources are, that's all. So if the council approves to go forward with the the RFPs, as y'all are discussing, just putting that in there.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Um so I'll try to make it quick. So uh going back to the, I guess, the script or the the ask for assistance. Um, do they specifically have to ask what are my options or something like? So, for example. Someone called, uh my disconnection noted or my delinquency notices, I'll be disconnected on the sixth, but I don't get paid on the eighth. But don't specifically say, can I make a payment on the eighth or can I have an extension till after the eighth? They just state the fact. Are are representatives able to take that as a trigger to offer services or does the customer actually have to say? Do I have an option to pay after the sixth?
No, they offer. They offer the information. They're they're looking, whenever the customers are calling. If someone is stating they cannot pay the bill, um i- if anything relates to that.
Looking for like signs of, it's not a a word that needs to trigger something that the customer has to say.
Correct.
And then that thing back, back to the delinquency notice in the space, so on the second page of a delinquency notice, there's a whole like half a page that has no text on it. So there's already space on there to put whatever we need to put.
We'll look at it. We have to look at the real estate of the page and get with the vendor to see if we can make those modifications and then the charges on it.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Uh thank you, Mayor. One last question. Did we discuss the dis- dis- disconnection fee and the.
We're getting to that.
Okay.
There it is, okay. I'm gonna turn it back over to John Locke.
This uh next section of the presentation will discover utility penalties, late penalties, as well as reconnection fees. And with the util- both are currently being reviewed as part of. Um all the electric and water wastewater penalties and fees are currently under review. The the user rates are always reviewed an- annually and the these are the rates that are charged based on how much water or electricity a customer uses. Those are always reviewed annually. These other um penalties and fees are being reviewed this year. And those, along with those user rates, will be presented to the Citizen U Advisory Board, Utility Advisory Board. And um the QI will ultimately make a recommendation to city council, just as they always do with the user rates. The uh penalties are charged when when an account is delinquent, um as we were just discussing. Um once the account becomes delinquent, the current late penalty is ten percent of the delinquent bill. Uh staff conducted a peer city review that included twelve si- different cities. And this, these results do not include the city of San Marcos. Eight of those cities have the same late penalty as the city of San Marcos, the ten percent. Three cities have a late penalty of five percent and one of the cities have a late penalty of twenty dollars. Plus they charge a one percent interest on the outstanding balance. The last time that we presented uh the penalty information, there is a request to break out. The uh multi-account customers or those apartment customers from the um single family residential. I think the the concern was with that was when we were showing what the average late penalty that a customer is paying. That the um I, that the apartment um was perhaps drag- dragging that average down. And so tha- that's what this slide is showing. Um if you look at the very top part, um that section, that is the non-multi-account customers. So this is for residential, that's your single family, and for commercial, it's just an individual business. It has the end of, the number of individual accounts that incurred a late penalty. And of those, so for instance, for residential, sixty seven hundred accounts incurred a late penalty. And those sixty seven accounts had a total of twenty seven hundred penalties. So on on average, e- each account that had a penalty had a total of four during fiscal year twenty four. Uh the total of all those penalties was five hundred thirteen thousand dollars. That's the um the payments that the city received for those late penalties. So the average penalty was eight eighteen dollars and forty eight cents. If you look at the same information, if you go to the middle section for the multi-account customer, the the residential. Uh these would be the apartment units. And for commercial, these are the apartment common areas, like a laundry room. Um or um it just a shared space within the, an apartment. And uh just focusing on the the residential, there were eighty five hundred total accounts that incurred a late penalty. And those eighty five hundred accounts in total had thirty thousand total penalties. So the the average uh for the multi-account customers was about three and a half. Um in in total, the total penalties received was three hundred twenty six thousand. So the average penalty amount was ten dollars and sixty eight cents. Um the bottom is just the sum of the two. Um so, uh you know, in total, there were fifteen thousand residential customers and eighteen hundred commercial customers. Ca- accounts that paid a penalty and the total penalties that were paid were about sixty five thousand. Um a- as you can see, um just as a point of reference. Um those individual accounts represent about thirty three percent of the total accounts that the city has. The the city currently has forty five thousand residential accounts. And about fifty eight hundred commercial accounts. So in total, it's fifty one thousand accounts. Um and if if you look at what the average penalty for all residential penalty. The aver- average penalty amount for all residential accounts is fourteen dollars and thirty nine cents.
Is this for electric plus water, plus wastewater? Plus community enhancement fee, plus stormwater fee, plus whatever else we might have. But not the ESD and things that we don't control.
Yes, ma'am. Th- this is the total penalty amount that was, that's received on the bill.
Thank you.
This, uh another uh question that came up last time when we discussed penalties. Um is if a flat fee could be charged in lieu of a percent. And that's what this chart shows. It it just shows the um the, some different flat or set penalty amounts. And compares it to what the city's current penalty is. So for the the top section, which is the non-multi-account customer for residential. Uh from the previous slide, you may recall that the average is eighteen dollars and forty eight cents. So we were to charge fifteen dollars, um that's gonna gen- generate less revenue than what the eighteen dollar would. Um if we charged twenty dollars, it would, as you can see, generate more revenue than what the the ten percent penalty does. If you look in the, in the middle section. The average for a multi-account customer was just over ten dollars from the previous slide. So both the fifteen and the twenty would generate more revenue than what the ten percent. So the customer would be paying a higher fee amount if we changed it to a set amount of fifteen or twenty dollars. If you look at the bottom, that just um brings both numbers together. Um the combined average from the previous slide was fourteen dollars, a little over fourteen dollars. And so if we had a set amount of fifteen dollars, we would bring in about the same amount of revenue. Um altogether, thirty five thousand more than. Um, altogether thirty-five thousand more than what the um current ten percent does. And at the twenty dollar level, we'd bring in a significant amount more, over three hundred thousand more. Um, just o- one thing to to point out, um, all all of the, whether it be a penalty or a fee or the user rates, all of these revenues are um go into the rate model. So if if we change a a rate or a penalty to reduce it, then that's gonna have to be made up somewhere. Cause and and all of these revenue sources cover the cost of providing utility services to customers. And unless there's um additional questions on the late penalties, we were gonna go into reconnect fees.
Mr. Scott.
Yeah, a question. It seems like the data that you're showing, if we just charged a flat rate of ten dollars, it kinda almost equals out to that ten percent, as you were saying, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
So how much would we lose if we did just a ten dollar flat rate?
If if we if we did charge the uh, or I'm sorry, it was a set rate of fifteen dollars. It is is similar to the ten percent. Um, if it was fifteen dollars, that's the one where we would generate about the same amount. We would actually bring in thirty-five thousand dollars more than what we currently do.
He's asking about ten dollars.
Yeah, if we did it at ten dollars.
I don't think we calculated that, did we?
We we did not. Um, I mean, in rough numbers, we would probably lose around four hundred thousand dollars. I'm just trying to look at the difference between twenty and fifteen and and we're so.
Well, yeah, that when you go from the average being fourteen thirty-nine, if you go to ten, clearly we're gonna be losing money.
Yes.
When you say losing money though, um, aren't utilities and all that's related stuff already incorporated into the budget? And this is just extra money on top of?
No, it's part of the budget.
Nope.
It's it's actually part.
You're counting you and using money that we hasn't possibly used yet as part of the budget?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Part of how everything's ca- this is something that surprised me, that we're actually budgeting on expecting people to be late. I I was thinking we were budgeting on accounts and if we got any late fees, that was that was gravy. I didn't know that was part of the calculations until.
It's budgeted based on trends, historical trends.
Two years ago.
Just like in every uh everything we do with budget is based on historical trends. Yes, I mean.
Yes, it's it's calm.
Well, it's part of our budgeting.
Yeah, I mean, just like we don't know what property tax we're gonna we're gonna get until we get to the end of the budget. We don't know what sales tax, it's all an estimate, same thing with this. You have to base it on something to have a budget, to know what revenues you can expect to bring in. Now, if we see that things aren't trending like that, that's why we monitor. And if something is showing that we need to pull something back, then we do that accordingly based on that monitoring process.
Bottom line, this is more revenue and if we didn't calculate that, rates would go up.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct. A hair.
I mean, we don't know how much, a hair or not, I don't know. Uh, we would have to put that into the rate model and that way the rate can tell us like that. The other aspect I know um Ms. Griselle Petty uh Perez Carey uh had talked about was that when they looked at charging the flat fee, and I don't remember if it was for this one, Griselle, but that it would disproportionately affect uh certain customers. And so that was the aspect. So there were some unintended things that it would disproportionately impact versus um having the effect that that council may want to do.
But if we had a flat rate, that would affect everybody equally.
Well, no, so because right now the average for apartment holders, the average late penalty is roughly eleven bucks versus fifteen for homeowners. So we had, if we just made it a flat rate of fifteen, apartment residents would be actually paying a higher rate or a higher penalty than they currently.
Almost fifty percent more on average, correct.
Now, if we, to your point, if we had a ten dollar flat rate, it would actually be lower than everyone's average, but then it would take, it would affect budgeting and stuff.
Gossip's money.
I'd like to see what that means.
What's that, the the ten dollars?
Yeah.
Well, I think you can just look and see if the average is ten eighty-one and it's fourteen for the other category, we're gonna lose money.
And the other aspect.
The unfortunate part is we're talking about this because this is when council wanted to bring it back and we're, we wanted to make sure we complied. But it's before you even see the budget policy with the revenues and the forecasts. So us thinking, oh, yeah, that we've got the money, we have revenues and expenditures, but where we start having problems is more looking at debt service coverage uh ratios. And we're barely at the statutory minimum. Like, we're not, we're not even showing best practices. So all of this stuff that we think, oh, we can just cover it, it's a little more complicated than that. And so I would just want council at some point to make sure y'all have the full information. So whatever decision is made, that those things were taken into account.
Yep, okay, does that complete your question?
No, I mean, the the whole idea is lowering the impact of what it costs somebody to get disconnected or reconnected. That's the whole goal of this to begin with.
Well, far.
Ten dollar flat rate would be a better rate than.
You'd have to raise the rates.
You'd have to raise the rates.
Yeah, we would, okay. So we're gonna put a pin in that one, put that in the parking lot. I need to go to Ms. Rodriguez, then I'll go to Mr. Gonzalez over here and then we need to move on.
Yeah, real quick, um, the cities that were cited in potential examples on different rates, were, did they have exceptions for between residential and commercial or was that just for both? Cause I mean.
I don't know that we asked that specifically.
Okay, because if, I saw the difference in residential versus commercial, um, doing a ten dollar flat rate for a commercial, I'm not really with.
And and thank you, Ms. Rodriguez, I I should clarify that and should have touched on it when we saw the slide. What what we would probably do is keep the commercial at the percent. And and we we've had um some discussions, um, because i- any fee or charge that 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 you charge, it has to be done fairly across all customer classes. Um, so if we did that, we would need to just charge the um the residential customers the percent until they reach that set fee that city council wanted. Like, if it ended up being ten dollars, then we would have to charge ten percent until th- the fee reached the ten dollar threshold. And then we would be able to continue to charge commercial the the ten percent fee.
Yeah, I'm all about that.
Okay, there there may be some things that are gonna need to
Yes.
to come back to at a future date. Ms. Rodriguez, anything else?
That was it, I just wanted to know the distinction.
All right, yeah, I think we may end up with more questions than answers here, but moving on.
Yes.
Because I've I've got a whole bunch when we get into, well, a few slides down.
Uh, moving on to the reconnection fees, the reconnection fees are charged to turn back on uh service following a disconnection due to non-payment. It's forty dollars per metered service uh during business hours and a hundred and seventy dollars after business hours.
Okay, can I bring up something now that was in my questions on the message board? And that is uh that water and electric was addressed separately over and over again. And I asked, would they not be disconnected at the same time? And the response is the electric disconnection is completed first, then two days later, the water is disconnected. I'm gonna ask a whole lot of questions about that, cause that makes no sense to me. I'm sure it made sense to somebody whenever that was established, but I'm gonna have more questions about that. But just so y'all know, and the reconnect fee, that forty is per meter. So it's forty for water and it's forty for electric, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so just.
Yes. If if both were just disconnected it and um if if Ms. Alvalos uh has more to add, um, my understanding of that was that we're disconnecting the electric service to still leave water, you know, in the home. In the event, um, most, I guess, the the, most homes would then pay it before you reach two days later and have the water disconnected. I think that was the thought process behind it.
That's what I'm assuming.
Yes.
But.
And and uh so initially it is, would just be the forty dollars in the event that, you know, someone had to go out and.
But if it goes the second round, it's another forty.
Yes, ma'am.
Because that's when somebody has to go out for water.
Yes.
I have a quick question that's relevant to this slide.
Ms. Garza.
Um, these fees, this is um, I I guess, up up until when did we start, um, uh, I guess, stop disconnecting on weekends? That was up to very recently, right? Or did we already?
Have we ever disconnected on weekends?
I don't think we were disconnecting on weekends, it was Friday that we changed.
Correct.
That's what I meant, I mean, Friday, yeah, going into the weekend, but we changed that, right? Cause that's the direction we gave. Do you remember that conversation, ma'am?
We don't disconnect on Fridays, we were not disconnecting on Fridays before either. Uh, we put that clarification up there. Um, I don't know where that question came up. I don't know if some, uh, you know, a a citizen addressed one of you about it. But we provided that information because we don't do it on Friday, as long as I've been here.
That's good to know, okay.
We haven't done it.
I think the what what Councilmember Garcia was recollecting, I am too, they talked about it at council meeting, but it was about like before a holiday and stuff like that also. So that if there was a holiday that was happening, that way it wasn't a longer period. So I know there were some changes that council asked us to do and I don't believe that that was part of our pro- procedures in terms of um before holidays and things like that.
Correct, and that was updated.
And so.
The conversation was definitely about Fridays, like, and staff was like, yeah, we didn't know y'all didn't want us to do that. So I don't know why everybody has amnesia now, but I I guess maybe we could revisit that video to confirm.
I remember exactly what you're talking about. But bottom line, they're not being done on Friday, so we can move on to the next thing. It looks like that's all of her questions. Ms. Gonzalez.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. When it comes to disconnecting the electrical, we talked about it last time. And uh I I got the sense that we can do that in-house, we don't actually have to go to the site to do that?
In in most instances, yes.
And like in the regular day, like today, if it has to be reconnected, but there's somebody already here, are we still gonna charge them that one seventy-five or?
One seventy?
One seventy.
Uh, no, sir, they they only charge one seventy if it's after business hours. So if if it's after five o'clock and the customer wants to be reconnected um before the following, you know, day during business hours, that's when the one seventy is charged.
It's only after hours?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, then the reconnection fee would be just forty dollars then?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Gonzalez on this side.
Um, so two quick questions. One, do we know roughly the ratio of manual disconnects versus remote disconnects um for electric?
Um, uh, one thing I need to clarify, um, I spoke with Mr. Gonzalez, after hours is is considered four P M. So anything, uh, and that is that's probably allowing the person to get to to the home to do it, yeah, uh, before five.
Okay.
Uh, even though the call came in earlier than that, let's say eleven o'clock or so?
Yeah, as as long as the customer would contact us before four o'clock, then then we consider that to be on the uh during business hours.
All right. So you, oh, to follow up on this, so even if the actual manual reconnect is after four o'clock, as long as the customer requested it before four o'clock, it's business hours?
Yes.
No, back to my question, do do we know the ratio of remote versus manual? Like, how many, how many of our customers are we?
Let's put that on the list to to get back with us, cause we we need, if there are questions that we don't know the answer to, we'll put them on a list if y'all will get back to us on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
That's one I don't know offhand, uh, so.
Then it goes on the list.
Are there's all the current questions?
Probably not.
No, we're good.
Okay. Uh, just touching on the the reconnection fee cost recovery. The last time this fee was updated was during fiscal year fourteen, it occurred during the twenty thirteen, fourteen fiscal year. And the staff did an estimated cost of reconnecting just using fuel and employee time. That's not a whole cost analysis, that's just looking at the time it takes an employee to do it, as well as the fuel, associated fuel cost. Uh, and for a water service, which is manual in the field, it took an average of an hour and a half. And the total cost of that was a hundred and thirty-six dollars. For an electric manual in the field, i- it could take up to two and a half hours. Um, the cost for an electric in the field was ninety dollars. And for a remote electric, um, it's twenty-five dollars.
Why is electric so much less than water? Hour and a half, one thirty-six, two and a half, ninety?
I don't.
And they're both in the field?
I I don't know the um the.
Is this our current cost or is this the estimated cost from twenty fourteen?
These are the um current estimated cost, yes, ma'am. And um I I would have to look into the details of what makes up each one of those costs. Um, the uh utilities did a study of what it costs to do each one of those, um, just using fuel and employee time, and those were the costs.
But you understand why I'm saying that looks weird, right?
Yeah, I I do understand.
All right, moving on.
This slide uh provides all of the uh reconnect fees. And it really, the um, it it's broken out how the other slides were with the non-multi-account customers, the multi-account customers and the total of both. Um, really just wanted to, if you look at the bottom, it has the blue box around it, by far, the majority um are done during business hours. Um, out of a hundred and ninety thousand, a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars of the reconnect fees that that were charged and collected were done during business hours. So um that's where we see most of reconnects occurring. That brings us to the multi-property liens. And this is um, it's just to introduce this topic and gauge council council's interest in bringing back an ordinance for consideration at a later meeting. The um multi-property liens, multi-family property liens, reduce delinquencies by imposing a utility lien on the multi-family property owners for unpaid utilities.
Is this what we're doing now or is this what you're proposing? I'm sorry if I missed that, if you said that.
This is a proposal, that this is something that we would bring back.
Cause all the other stuff we've been looking at is a what is.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
This this is something where we're looking for opportunities and and I know in the.
No, I I know where we're going, it's just, it's not clear on the slide that this is not current practice, but this is a proposal.
Right, this is, this, no, uh, great point. What we're talking about is just seeing that there have been times where there has been kind of a, oh, we've gotta go and shut off a whole apartment complex. And it's like, why? Well, it's because they paid their bills, but their landlord didn't pay the electric bill. And so we're looking for ways to not hold the tenants responsible when it's the landlord, right? And so that is, that this is what we've seen as a best practice that other cities are adopting that doesn't hold it against the tenant, instead holds it against the landlord and or the property owner.
That's nothing to do with residential, right?
Excuse me?
Departments.
This is just apartments, correct.
Yeah, it doesn't affect homesteads and it doesn't affect um utilities that are in a tenant's name.
Or commercial. Commercial, that's not apartment.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so shall I just ask the question now while we're here?
Sure, yes, ma'am.
Y'all like it?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
He didn't even let him explain. Um.
That's what we just talked about.
You mentioned some other cities where this is eh, existing? Okay. Um, yeah, if I could just get a little bit more information or if that's a novel program, novel thing that they're doing, maybe haven't had the time.
And 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 this was really just to gauge city council's interest. We we would bring this back to another council meeting and provide more information.
I'm not opposed to it.
So you're a yes, Mr. Gonzalez, on this side?
Uh, yes, I'm a yes, but I have one question. I thought apartment complexes had their own individual meters.
Not all of them.
You mean, they get to double charge as well? Let's say that that the apartment complex has one giant meter and they separate that out. Do they add another cost to their tenants?
I assume that there would be some kind of flat rate like a lot of, most of them do for water.
Yeah, if uh, and and the master metered apartments are are the ones that we were talking about in this instance where um, the apartment complex is is charging their tenants, the tenants are paying the property owner and the property owner isn't paying the bill.
Not paying the bill.
So so that, those are the types of situations that we're trying to address with this.
But let's say I moved in and I want my electric turned on, how do you do that if there's only one?
It's part of the apartment, you don't have to go, you don't have a bill in your name. You don't have a separate account, you're relying on the apartment management.
Wow. Yeah.
Yeah, how they figure out what each person owes, I don't know.
I don't either.
Okay, so you're a yes on this one?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Ms. Garza? She's not with us right now, Mr. Scott?
I am, my my camera's just kinda messed up, yeah, I'm fine, it's fine.
You're a yes, Ms. Scott, we're, we're all yeses. So bring something back.
Yes, ma'am. And and that brings us to the city council direction. Yes, ma'am. And, and that brings us to the city council direction. We, we've already addressed the, one of the bullets. The, the first bullet was to proceed with the contracts from the utility payment assistance request for a proposal.
Okay. We have several questions. I'm going to go around the table. Ms. Rodriguez? Just to proceed with the very first thing we talked about.
I'm good with that.
You're a yes. Mr. Gonzalez on this side?
I'm good.
Ms. Garza?
And now I'm going to be no, because I have a lot of questions I didn't get answered, so I'm going to say no for right now.
Okay, I'm a yes. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Mendoza cannot be with us right now. Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez?
This is just the first question?
This is to proceed with the other providers.
Uh, yes.
Okay, so you're a yes. On the late penalty amount, I'm just going to go around the table and, and give, give me something that indicates. You can say, I'm good with the 10% now. We can go, can we go to the slide? I have page, well, I don't know what slide it is. I've got page 21 packet. For the utilities to possible flat of 15, 20, if you'll let me know which, which way you're, you're going on that one. And I will go to, so Gonzalez first.
Okay, I'm okay with the 10% now, for now.
You know, I didn't think I would be, but I am now. So, yes. Ms. Garza?
I'm just a little confused. Isn't this the, isn't this the point where Mr. Scott had some recommendations that you kind of said that we will revisit another time? Because I was interested in his feedback.
Yeah, he wants to see the $10. I'm looking to see how many council members want to do that.
Right. I guess I just, I feel like he didn't complete his thoughts, but, like, he was teeing up for the rationale, and then you were kind of like, shush. So I don't know if he has anything else to say. I'm trying to make like an informed decision, but I don't know. Didn't get that much information.
You don't know yet. Mr. Scott, where are you on this one?
I'm a flat fee of $10.
He wants to go flat $10. Lorenzo Gonzalez?
So I had a quick question, because I, I think you started saying this, but addressing another issue. I guess because you were addressing the fairness of businesses. Is there an ability to keep it at 10% until you reach the 15, $15 flat rate for residents?
Yes, if, if city council decided they wanted to make that flat rate at $15, then yes, we, that's what we would do. Keep the commercial at.
Well, no, but what I'm saying is, is could we do that for residents? So in essence, not negatively or disproportionately affect the, the apartment complexes. So for residential accounts, if your 10% is below $15, then you pay 10% until it reaches $15, and then it becomes a flat rate. Is that an option? Can that be done?
Yes, sir.
All right, so I, I'd probably be interested in something like that.
And I am, I'm kind of going down that same road. What, what we don't see here, what I'm not seeing, I'm seeing the average. I'm not seeing minimum and maximum. And I know when Mr. Gleason was still here, he was talking about, he was citing some penalties that were pretty high, depending on what your rate is. I would like to see, before we make a final decision on this, you know, how many people is it? Go back to that $10. Is there anybody that has been $75 for? You know, I realize if their electric, you know, is that high, but how often do we have something that's really super high? Or is that, that 1081 thing pretty much in the 5 to 15 range?
Mark one to $10 flat rate.
That's what I was looking at, is what are some of the maximums that we're seeing?
And offhand, I'm, I'm not aware of that.
I'm asking that that go on the list.
Yes, ma'am.
Of things that y'all will respond back, and then we'll, we'll have that information when we make a final decision on this. I can, I really like where, where you're going, that it's a percent, but then we do set a max on it, which was part of what Mr. Gleason was talking about, is if, if you can't pay your bill, adding another $50 on there is not helping. So that's what I would need to see. Are y'all good with that? Looking at what some of these maximums are?
Yeah, I think it also addresses those unintended consequences that were brought up earlier about, you know.
Right.
Mm-hmm. How much? So I'm guessing, though, by us changing these fees, it's going to eventually impact utility rates.
Yes, ma'am.
And so when people have complaints, when rates inevitably rise because of this.
Not necessarily.
I'm okay with doing something like my colleague, Mr. Gonzalez, mentioned about residential. I'm not necessarily okay with extending that into commercial. So that's where I am right now. And I think he was set at the 15.
It was 10%, but it maxes out at 15. Is that correct?
Uh, yes.
I'm, I'm with you.
Yeah, and, and the reason I'm saying 15 is because it's looking like 15 is roughly the average for.
A $15, correct.
So it basically, apartment customers would pay the 10% on average, and homes would pay.
And not to exceed the amount of $15, basically.
But we're going to be losing money on that, because we were losing money on the flat 15. So if it's 15 or less, that's going to be.
Well, actually, weren't we making a little bit of money on?
Which, if, if you did the 15, because respectfully, I will say that, again, the council's philosophies have, philosophy has been, do as slow as you go, rate increases, because things are increasing, rather than doing a big increase at one time. So arguably, even when we show you the budget policy next week and you see the funds, we're, again, barely at the minimum of our debt service ratio.
Right.
And so if we lose money and we don't raise rates, then we can't really fiscally responsibly run the utility. And so that's where we're coming from, is just that the money has to be brought up somehow, some way. Either that, or we're getting behind on infrastructure or, or something, so.
And of those, on that, though, of those, and you don't have to know this off the top of your head, but of those other cities who had that $15 flat rate, do they set different expectations for commercial properties? Like, because when we talk.
Yes, ma'am. What, what we'll probably need to do is follow up with them and ask that specific question, because in our first survey, we, we didn't differentiate, am I correct? We, we didn't differentiate between the two, so we, we can follow back up with them and.
Yeah, because if it's a corporation, in my opinion, who's delinquent? A big one. A corporation who's delinquent, by all means, has the ability to pay. Perhaps it's something to do with finance or something. I don't know. There's late. I'm not really interested in having that same energy for them as I would residential, considering that's an investment they decided to get into.
I totally agree with you. My concern is our small businesses.
That's why I mentioned explicitly corporation. I can understand that. I can understand having the same energy for residences, or residences as well as small business in that same situation. What I'm concerned of is those delinquent accounts for corporations that have the means. And if we're talking about alleviating some of the burden on, you know, our taxpayers, let's offset it there, or maybe at least consider that.
Well, tax, property tax is separate from.
But that's what I'm saying. If, if, that's why I asked about the cities, though. Let's say they have a 15, and it is for residential and commercial, okay. But I'm, I'm asking if there are cities who look at the differences and such and increase some of those penalties for commercials, commercial properties to offset some of that, considering we're working with vastly different scenarios. So does that, I don't know if that, that question makes sense.
So where are you on this one?
I think I mentioned I was okay with what was proposed by Mr. Gonzalez, that $15, or if less, 10%.
And that's what, I'm going back, and I said I agreed, but I'm going to have to take that back, because we're only ahead if everybody's paying the 15. If not everybody's paying the 15, we're at a loss. But I think I could go with that philosophy with a max of 20, so that at least we're, we're maxing it out at something smaller. It's what you owe at 10, max at 20. What would that do for us dollar-wise? Because if we kind of come out with the same amount of money, but we're helping the little guy. I think that might get us where we need to go.
That would get to the interest of what y'all are talking about, is trying to help, you know, the, the single family and the small business, while still providing a lesser fee than what is required today, and it doesn't have us then trying to make it up somewhere else.
So would, would you be good with looking at max of 20, Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez?
And Ms. Rodriguez?
For, for easy math, yes, but I think what.
Let's look at both, 15 and 20.
Well, what I'm thinking is, what if we set the max at a sliding scale of what the average is?
That's what it is now.
Well, no, I mean, because, so a max of 20 would give us some sort of a profit.
Well, I, I don't know, because see, that, the flat here is if everybody paid 20, and your proposal is not everybody's going to pay 20.
Right, but like, can we go back? I think it's like literally the, the page before this on the presentation. So.
And we're at 4:41.
Not, not multi-account.
And Mayor, for the sake of time, could we just, it seems like we're narrowing the scope between $15 and 20. Can we bring both of those scenarios?
15 and 20, and we'll look at them later.
And then look at it later.
But I guess what I'm saying is like, so in this particular case, we would set the max at $18.48. So 10% until you meet $18.48, and then at that point, which would theoretically put us at a net zero, I think?
No, because.
Well, no, because we still have some lots, because some people are over 18.
Right.
Yeah, that makes.
Yeah. Let's, let's, can we get that? Is that possible in our system to?
We can do an analysis and see if we can calculate.
Bring back both scenarios, and, and that way y'all can make a more informed decision and not rush.
Let's do the 10 for Mr. Scott.
Okay. Okay. The $10 flat rate, and then the percent with the maximum fee of 15, and the percent with the maximum fee of 20.
The 10% now, 15, and then 20.
Okay.
That's for residential.
Yes.
Everybody, that was for residential. And where are you on commercial? Any changes?
So just throwing the idea out there, I think, and I don't even know how feasible this is, but to be able to, because I don't, I mean, I might be wrong, but I don't see how we could differentiate on commercial accounts between small businesses and corporations.
FTEs?
I guess, yeah.
The amount.
Well, so I would say something like that. What if we looked more at like fee waivers or like things like that that would help small businesses as opposed, I mean, because I didn't see.
At, at this point.
A major corporation going, jumping through the, the hoops of applying for waivers or whatever, they'll just pay the damn fees. But the small businesses that it is actually going to break them to pay these fees will jump through the red tape of applying for waivers or whatever process we set up.
If it's a small business, it's likely to be a small amount. Oh, I mean, the usage is going to be small.
Do we define small business anywhere in our code, as far as like number of employees?
In our economic development, I think.
So perhaps maybe let's just group in small businesses when we're talking about residential, and then we have, when we're talking about commercial, we're making it clear that does not include small businesses.
Okay. Ms. Reyes, can y'all take some of this into consideration in your, the spreadsheet to kind of figure out the lower and see where the break is for small businesses defined by less usage?
Yeah, Tyler, you're the director of utilities. Again, just a quick reminder, though, when you talk to small businesses, what's going to be hard for us to differentiate is a local flower shop draws the same power as AutoZone. So when you're saying small businesses and we're talking about the, the, the vision that we have is the usage, but if you're actually targeting our local small business, family business, that, if that's the environment you're trying to reach, that's going to be harder to do, because I can't differentiate between a 7-Eleven and AutoZone or my choice, right? So that would actually take a literally manual manipulation to go look and see what.
That's why I was saying, based on usage.
Rate structures, right? We have, so we have small commercial, medium-sized commercial, large commercial. Those are easy to break apart, but who's behind that? That, that would take a little bit more work. So when you say small business, just be mindful that.
But what's the criteria that makes somebody a small commercial, medium commercial? Maybe that would help for the council to understand.
So, so it's pretty easy breakout. It's like, small is a less than 50 KVA transformer, then medium's less than 250. When I say less than 50, the, the transformer that feeds your house is a 5 or a 10. So a small commercial that's less than 50 is pretty small, right? 50 to 250, 250, and then over 500 definitely are our largest accounts. But within that first grouping, again, I could put a 50 KW transformer at, at, again, a flower shop and AutoZone or, or some local, you know, the root seller restaurant, you know, whatever small is, right? So just as you target that, you know, be, be mindful of that.
Okay.
So essentially, you're saying that an AutoZone and a local flower shop would, could directly have the same average usage?
So it's hard for us to differentiate that without actually looking to see who's paying that bill, so just keep that in mind.
Okay. Ms. Garza?
I did find the information. So when council talked to Ms. Garza's point.
Were you asking me if I had a question, Mayor?
Well, your hand was up.
Okay, sorry. Yeah.
Okay.
I got confused. Well, okay, so I guess I'll pause my question then.
Okay, let's let Ms. Reyes give her statement, and then I'll come back to you.
All, all I was going to mention is that Ms. Garza was, was correct. I know that, that the council did discuss this in August.
Discuss what we're talking about.
In regard to disconnecting on Fridays and holidays. And so then at the time, we sent something that had the non-paid disconnect policy revision, and I said, talked to John yesterday about maybe adding the not before holidays or Fridays. They're an admin policy that is more operational in nature. So that was something that was changed in and around August to make sure that, that we're able to, to provide the, the answer to Ms. Garza's question about that. She is correct. It was in August.
Okay. All right. Ms. Garza?
Yeah, I really appreciate everybody whipping up the calculator to come up with different proposals on like what city staff should explore. But I guess my question is, when are we going to move away from depending on resident struggles to fund our utilities? Like, at what point are we going to take to, like, explore more sustainable equitable model? Does that make sense? Because I feel like right now it's like, oh, we didn't know we were measuring the utility, like, late fees and all that with, like, to see how we're doing. Like, at what point are we going to stop doing that so that we don't have to do all this math?
I don't understand your question.
Could I try to clarify?
Go ahead.
Because, um, because I do understand, like, forecasting when making appropriations, you know, most of it is off of forecasting. But while I can understand forecasting around sales tax, property tax, and, and so forth, I think the thing that perhaps members are struggling with is the using of capturing fees as a method of forecasting. Because I guess the impression from the public could be that we are essentially banking on collecting fees, on people being late as a means to meet our budgetary goals. And I think maybe some problems around that. Is that sort of capturing what you were talking about?
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, I mean, depending on, late fees has long been established as like an unstable and unreliable source of revenue. And so I guess that's what I was bringing up, like.
And, and just to respond directly to the, to budgeting those fees, there, you know, we have years of history of how, how much fees are being collected, and, and we budget those really conservatively. You know, and, and that kind of goes back to our earlier discussion. We don't need to rely on the fees. We just need to take the fees out of the rate model, and then the rates will come out to what they need to be minus those fees. So we can completely, you know, eliminate the fees out of the rate model. It just, it's, it's, that revenue's going to come from somewhere, and it's going to come from the rates instead of the fee.
When's the next time we calculate that?
We do it every year.
We do it every year, ma'am.
And when is the next time we're going to do that?
We usually go to QAB around July.
And when is the next time we're going to do this calculation? July?
That's why we're hoping to get this information, so that this can go into the rate model as they look at it. I mean.
I think I want to see if to not use the penalties and the fees and all those other things. If we went with rates, just the rates, what would this go up? Would it go up a penny for everybody?
Half of a percent.
How much?
Looking at the screen, you've got roughly $1.6 million there. If half of that is electric, that's 800,000.
Okay.
Electric's revenues are 70. Electric's revenues are seventy million, so using round numbers, seventy million, seven hundred thousand, that's one percent. Let's say you're only gonna recover half of that, then you just had a half a percent rate increase across the board next year to make up that delta.
How much?
Half of a percent. Now, you already know from last year that we're gonna bring you back a request for rate increases next year on electric and water anyway, so in addition to what we were already gonna have to come back to you with, you can add a half a percent to both utilities to make this kind of change, just to pull it out of the budget. That's the scary part, here's the good part, you pull it out of the budget, and we actually do recover it, then it becomes excess revenue at the end of that year, it'll go into CIP, right? It'll go away, but we can absolutely pull it out of the budget in terms of a budgeting tool, but to do that, and to meet all the other goals that we have to have, it's a half percent.
And, and, and there we know, now, now we know.
And that, that has been the, um, the philosophy, again, in terms of trying to take a balanced approach on mitigating rates for our, for our residents and our customers, and so that has been the reason why it has been looking at that budget model, so that it, we know that historically, that's what we've typically brought in.
So instead of charging the extra rate to the customer, we've done it as trying to take that holistic approach and looking at that in total.
But it's half of one percent.
Correct.
Yeah, for me, it just feels-
But then it disproportionately puts the burden on people who cannot already afford their bills.
Exactly.
Okay. Did you have anything else?
Oh, no, ma'am, that was it.
Good to know, that was wonderful information.
And maybe just, like, explaining that a little bit more, um, like, in summarizing on how everything you just said, maybe so we can better articulate that to people in, in the case questions arise.
Okay, that's fair.
Okay, let's go back to the screen that says, what you need to know from us, where are we? Because I'm gonna go back to the first thing, direction, uh, we're looking for some more information on this late penalty amount, you're gonna get us some information, you're gonna get the ten dollars, you're gonna get the ten percent, fifteen max, ten percent, twenty max. Should the reconnect fee be concluded, included in the review, review of what?
The annual fee review, and, and the, the thought there is, if, if we do the cost recovery, um-
Yeah, I think we just answered that one.
Okay.
Didn't we?
For, uh, not for the reconnect fee.
We did it for the late fee, not the late penalty.
For me, it was reconnect and penalties.
The, the current reconnect fee is the forty dollars during business hours, one seventy.
So you're looking for, should that, the forty and the one seventy change?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And, and this is really getting to the discussion, if council would prefer, if it's a remote turn-off, that there's a different fee, um, as opposed to a, um, you know, a manual turn-off where someone has to go out to the residence.
Yeah, and, and that's where I'm at, because, and I, I know this is like, the two extremes in one scenario, but in theory, somebody could be paying a hundred and seventy dollars for an after-hours, remote reconnect, it's only costing us on average twenty-five.
Yes, that, that would be possible, yes.
I feel that that's unfair to customers.
I hate to, I hate to ding the people that have, that don't have automated meters.
Right, and, and that's, that's a counter argument.
However, it would be good for those, and I have a feeling, I know what Mr. Huors is gonna say, but you go right ahead.
Yeah, I think the idea here, and, and why we, um, you know, respond to these questions by saying that we're gonna look at this, is this is actually a cost of service calculation put into it, and we need to run that through the meat grinder, there's some things that are gonna go in, for example, when we update our budget projections, that changes our base salary rate for the different crews, which then could go into this number, so-
Right, and, and correct me.
Give you that number today, I'm gonna come back with a higher number three months from now, as we do our budget.
Right.
Second piece of that, the one seventy, y'all already know, because we've told you, is that's, that's from twenty fourteen, uh, it's not reality today, so my staff is already looking at not just what these numbers should be, but how do we do our work, how do we come up to this point? How's, what's the justification behind that count, what's the methodology? So for example, if you say, uh, the question that came on the message board, what, what happens if you did, just rolled one truck to turn both utilities on? Okay, well, three years ago, you couldn't do that, the water crew was completely separate, trained different, staffed different, trucks were, were equipped differently, and you didn't co-mingle those two. Well, we've changed that, we're moving those functions together into a single metering crew, so it may be possible today, if we staff it and watch the work orders come through correctly, that we can now put one crew to go out and do that. So that number now, with that I just said was gonna go up, it's gonna come back down, right? But we've got to figure out what that process looks like eternally, and as we go through that exercise, how do we do these tasks, why do we do them this way, what's the legacy stuff that's just out there, because that's how it's always been done? We're looking all of those things, when we say we're going back to look at reconnection fees, we're looking at everything we do related to this, and that's what we're gonna come back, then we run back, that back through the cycle, and say, what is that, what's the impact of that? Does that help our budget, reduce our budget, and those are the numbers we'll come back to you with.
Council, are y'all good with waiting until these numbers come back?
Yes.
And let's see what we need to do, and were yeses on that, and I'm seeing yes from Mr. Mendoza, Mr. Gonzalez, your hand is up.
Oh, thank you.
Are you, no?
No, I have a small comment.
Go ahead.
Uh, on utilities that, uh, services have not been rendered, let me give you an example, with the water meter, and y'all didn't turn it off, but y'all still charged, like y'all did, was that ever fixed?
Charge, you mean like charging a reconnect fee when it was never turned off?
Right.
I guess that's one of the things you need to get back with us on.
And if you have an example, please, please send it in.
Well-
Because theoretically, that doesn't happen.
Or, it, it happened to, to, to me, in one of my rentals, yeah.
Okay, if you'll get the address, they'll, they'll get that figured out.
Okay.
Okay, uh- So, I wanna go back to the, um, back to the beginning, and look at these allocations to these three, four entities. Ms. Reyes, can we change what these are?
Absolutely.
Well, we've got, and that was way back at the beginning.
You're talking about the entities for the RFP?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we've got community action, which y'all are recommending forty thousand, but yet what I heard in the presentation is they said they can do thirty.
Correct, it would be thirty.
So, I'm not sure why this deal says forty?
We actually didn't find that out until today, Mayor.
Okay, that explains that, okay, so what I would like to propose is that we drop them to the thirty that they say they can do, and that we give that other ten to the one who's not getting as much, and that would be Salvation Army to give them twenty-seven, which kind of makes them all kind of close, not that, that's what I was looking for. Um, but, uh, I can justify that extra ten, not really the extra, but the ten, going to a group that's, that's doing a lot of it now, I hear that communities and schools been doing it, I don't think they've been doing it that long, because I don't think they've been that active in our community for years and years and years, I think this is, they've been around, it's way different the last few years. And of course, BCL's gonna be new, so, um, that's going to be my proposal, is to change from the forty to thirty per their request, and to move that ten to Salvation Army. Are y'all okay with that? Go ahead, Ms. Rodriguez.
Uh, again, I would just like to see something that shows they have the capacity to do that, considering that during the HSAB discussions, there were already some concerns, they themselves hinted about, uh, potential c- lack of capacity for their current operations, and so, I, I just would like to see something to, to see they have it before saying yes.
And we, and we can get that back, but here's the deal, they're being asked now, and from what I understand, they're often having to say no.
Understand that.
So, so having more money to give out doesn't necessarily mean that they're gonna need more capacity than what they have now, it means that with the capacity that they've got, they're gonna be able to meet more need.
Either way, though, I mean, hopefully, the hope is, is that when people are aware there's money out there, because it's the whole purpose of this thing.
There will be more.
Um, the floodgates will open.
I agree.
And so, again, my concern is, do they have the capacity, that's the only question, and if we can get some documentation showing they have capacity, then, yeah, I can entertain it at that time.
I'm good with that, Mr. Gonzalez, where are you?
That's here, I agree with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm on board with that.
Yes, okay, so we're all yes, provided they've got the capacity. Ms. Garza, are you good with that?
I'm, uh, I can't answer that until I see, like, the matrix, and like, how they were awarded, like, s- like, a lower amount, because I know, the only answer that I heard was, like, they, they landed on that number because of some scoring system. So I would be interested in seeing the scoring system for all of that.
Yeah, we, we had that, if you're talking about HSAB, we, that was all in the packet, if you need more, ask staff.
I meant, like, here.
And just, uh, on Salvation Army, the reason that they, um, ranked a little lower was turnaround time, um, each of these agencies provided turnaround times, uh, within their proposals, and Salvation Army's was longer, um, than the other.
Then we need that information in order to make these decisions.
Yeah.
So if y'all could let us know, all that criteria, we need to know.
W- with that information, I mean, can we, so I, I'm totally on board with reducing community actions by ten thousand, because they themselves say they only have the capacity for thirty thousand. Can we distribute the, the ten thousand that we're taking from community action at the same proportion that we distributed everything else, so based on those same formulas?
We could do that, but let's wait and s- get the information of what the, what the respondent said that they could do.
Yeah, I think, I think that information will be helpful, because I was leaning towards what, um, Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez is saying, um, with, yeah, but it would be helpful to have more context.
Right, and, and I'm not opposed to that, but we're still making decisions on data that we don't have.
Right.
So, we need, we need the capacity information in the proposals, so that question has been resolved. Uh, are we good with saying that the ten percent administrative fee is the max they can claim? But if they want to give all of that out as, um, if they don't need that ten percent, or they need five, that that's more money that they can give out in utility assistance, are y'all good with that?
I'm good with it.
Just we're capping it at ten, but allow them to do, to give it out, okay, so we're all good there. Uh, do we want to look at one application for all three of our new ones, BCL Communities and Schools and Salvation Army?
Yes.
I think that would be good, and we really don't want it to be more like the community action that takes forever, because that's why we're doing this, if it's all like community action, we have not gotten anywhere. So, so that's a yes, and, uh, the reporting monthly, and what we're wanting to know is if people get denied, we're, I think we're all good on that one. And the other one is the maximum number of times that people can get assistance now, their community action, which is the only place, is twice a year?
That is my understanding.
Okay, so, do we want to keep that, which means somebody's gonna have to figure out if somebody's applying to all of them, somebody's gonna have to figure that out somewhere? Or do we want to allow more than twice, because now we've got more ways for people to get the dollars, can I ask that, or is that a hard and fast twice that we can't change?
That is, uh, just the, the current policy, so if it's something that council would like to change, we could, you did bring up, um, something that will be challenging, and that is for those, um, customers that are applying to multiple agencies, um, monitoring that to make sure that there's no overlap there.
I asked that question way back when we first started talking about doing this, is what would we do, so council, twice a year, where are you on that one? Mr. Scott says he's good with two.
Like leaving, he's, he's saying he's good with leaving it?
That's what I'm hearing him say.
Um, no, I don't like that, I don't know if that needs to be, like, maybe once in a quarter, or-
That would be four. I can put you down for four, this is gonna come back to us.
Yeah, I just, the reason I don't like two is because I think the implication, whether it's our intention or not, is that, uh, a one, or twice, uh, you know, a year assistance is gonna be enough to get somebody out of their si- situation. Um, so just allowing for larger grace.
So you're four, Ms. Garza, if you would give me a number, please.
Four.
Four? Um, Mr. Sal Gonzalez?
Um, I'm good with four, that's fine.
Lorenzo Gonzalez?
I'm good with fours, fine, uh, my concern's actually more about keeping track of it, and how expensive that would be if we're keeping track of, I'm assuming someone's gonna have to develop some sort of-
Well, it's per address, and so y'all will be the gatekeepers on that, because BCL doesn't have to talk to Salvation Army about it, they can turn it in, and it's gonna-
But then, in, in theory, whatever number would go with two or four, so if someone goes to BCL that number of times, and then, so now BCL knows that you hit the max, they, they refuse to help you, they go to Salvation Army, Salvation Army tells you yes, and then it gets to our utility company, and now it's on us to say, actually, no, Salvation Army was wrong, because this is your fifth time.
And they're, and they're all going to have to understand that they're gonna have to tell people that it's four per year regardless of where you went, and that's gonna be confusing in the community, but-
But perhaps the uniformity in application can make that a little bit easier?
Yes.
Um-
I agree, except that we're not talking about community action using our new forms, so we would still have at least one provider using their existing form, so that throws that argument out of there.
Yeah, okay, but we're gonna put you down for four for right now, Mr. Mendoza, can we see some fingers? You're two, all right, and, uh, I can be four, so, let's figure that out, we may end up with a three, but I think most of us like four, so that's where we are. Is there anything else I need to ask?
Yes. As far as other direction, because I know that was one of the options, um, if we can just please figure out something related to that script, and just getting that information out, not to belabor the point, but if my colleagues are in agreement with that, I mean, it just, that's such a critical point in all this.
The, the, the script, and, and if there's any way possible, getting it into the disconnect notice, hopefully, we don't have to insert another sheet of paper, but you know what, if we have to insert another sheet, quarter sheet of paper in there, third?
It, it might be that we can look at doing a QR code or something like that, you know, so that it doesn't, so we can look and see what, like, maybe to get additional information, maybe there's some, some, like, limited information.
I would be curious. Some font sizes, like, like, change the formatting, make it work.
So we can, we can look at it, we can look at it and see.
I, I would be curious.
You get what I'm saying, because I showed you the picture.
Yeah, he showed me a picture of it.
With our, with our disconnects, and if there's any way we can figure out, how many people are online, check their usage online, how many people are doing online stuff, we've got an email address, and how many of those disconnects? We have nothing to indicate that they're doing stuff electronic.
Uh, uh-
So it would mean, do we have email addresses for them, do they have an online account to begin with, that, that, that we can find out? But that's what I'm trying to figure out, because it sounds great, so, oh, let's just put a QR code on there, that may not be helpful too, I don't know, a third, a half, a tenth, I don't know. Me?
So we can, we, we'll look at, we'll look at the options to see how we can, um, add that, add something to the script, um, I also found what, um, Councilmember Garza was referencing in the university, uh, by looking at some of the forms that some of the participants provided, so I've gotten that over to our team to, to look at, and make sure that those have been answered to the participants, but also, for any future things that we bring forward, that those things are touched on, so, uh, thank you for bringing those forward, I, I did, uh, find those, Councilmember Garza.
And I'm not opposed to the QR code, I'm just saying that may not be the solution for a lot of people.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely, I mean, we hear, we've heard council that you want us to put something there, let us look and see what, what we could do it.
See who's got the email address.
Sure.
And, and with the system.
Sure.
I had a question that I probably shouldn't know the answer to, but this RFP is for what years? Is it just for the next year, or?
Well, it, it wasn't a set-in date, uh, so we were going to initially make the, um, agreement for, um, a shorter term through the end of this fiscal year, and then continue through next fiscal year, and just evaluate how, how the agencies are doing, how the program is doing.
And, and I ask that just to kind of throw out this idea, whenever we go out for next RFP, can we ask, and this is addressing the ten percent admin fee, can we ask them to include what their admin fee would be, and use that as a criteria of ranking the providers?
Good idea. Uh, but in, in any case, just as we do with any, anyone providing services for us, there's gonna be an annual or whatever review, determine everything, and, okay.
And we can make recommendations based on what we're seeing, if it's looking like it's effectively achieving the goals set out by council, or if it's not, then if we need to pivot, then we can- or if it's not, then if we need to pivot, then we can, we can work on making sure we keep you informed on that.
But in the meantime, when y'all look at the reports, if somebody's not using much, call them up and say, what's up?
Yes, and we'll also, um, make sure we would provide those monthly reports to y'all as far as the reasons, you know, that things are being, maybe it wouldn't be the monthly reports we provide, but maybe on a quarterly basis.
Yeah.
We can report to counsel and let y'all know.
But I'm saying, somebody at the city be responsible for not just filing them away, but looking at it. And if you see something that.
Yeah.
Oh, I think we can help with that, call them up, see what you can do.
Yes, that, that's what we do.
So on that note, trends, and just for my own curiosity, are we expecting, for example, communities and schools to give out more money during the school year and start trending at a lower rate during the summer, because they're not having that contact with students? Like, are, did we already take that into consideration?
I think once people know that they've got a source of funding, they may get asked in the summer whether they, I don't know what they do in the summer and if they could handle it.
I'm just saying, like, co- coming from, I've worked at the time of one campus, I know that a lot of the resources, at least at the district I worked at, were actually our parent community liaison, reaching out to families, because they.
They know that, that.
From the students, or they can see, you know, whatever it is.
Correct.
Um, so because the, the, that PCL or the teachers or whatever won't be seeing the students during the summer months, then they won't have that proactive reach to the parents, because I, I know at least, at, at the district I worked at, that was actually, a lot of the services were going out to parents.
But, but once the word gets around, the communities and schools is doing this, depending on what their capacity is in the summer, and I don't know that, um, I, I think that they will probably get requests.
I know from some of the folks that I know that participate in communities and schools, families that participate, it seems like they do some stuff, like have some interaction with the kids still during the summer.
Right.
Because it's, I mean, we know the high-risk times are after school between four and six.
Exactly.
And out-of-school time.
Yep.
So we know that those are important times to make those touches, so let us talk with them about what, how they anticipate to do that during the summer.
Bringing that up, and that I don't wanna penalize them as a provider, because they start trending down during those months, or whatever.
No, I, I don't, I don't think so. I think we would probably.
But it is what it is, and we can't change this, and I need to move on.
Will be important, but it'll also be having the other two providers, as well as community action, that can also make sure that they're able to do that. So we'll, we'll have some conversation to just address some of what you're talking about, Councilmember Gonzalez.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, is there anything else, counsel? Anything else, staff? Okay, counsel, we, we need to make a decision here. Uh, we've been here over two hours. It's five thirteen. We have another presentation. I'm not sure how long that's going to take, or how long our discussion will be.
It can be pretty quick.
And we have executive session. Now, we post executive session on this agenda and the six o'clock agenda. So, uh, if we need to, we can do executive session items. I think there's three. Um, we can do, see if we can get one done now, or whatever. And we need to eat dinner. So, I need to find out, what do y'all wanna do? Do we wanna postpone the, uh, ARP dollars to?
It can, it can be fairly quickly. I mean, we can absolutely postpone it. I know we have some full work sessions coming up in March. Um, but it, it's really gonna be just making that final recommendation and trying to get it all to rental assistance is what we're, is what we're proposing. Um, because we know that's where there's been the interest of the council, and we could still meet our compliance. So it can be as short as you want, and we can do that, or if counsel prefers to postpone, we can.
Can we presume that we've all read the agenda? We've looked at the dollars, and there's really one decision that we have to make?
So we probably would have to read the caption just for transparency's sake, and then we can, city attorney, but.
Well, I need to make sure that we were even gonna do it before I asked her to read the caption.
Yes.
Let's read item two, Ms. Trevino.
Receive a staff presentation regarding the current status of American Rescue Plan funding and provide direction to the city manager.
I knew this was gonna happen following John. Sorry.
And here we are.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Hayden Meagle, Director of Administrative Services. Uh, say that I'm gonna begin with a quick update on ARP, but let's just go ahead and go. So the purpose of this presentation is to give you a quick update on the funding that we have spent and that we've received, and to provide a recommendation to allocate, or to reallocate a small amount of available ARPA funding. Let's see. Most recent council action was approval of a resolution reallocating funding in November twenty twenty-four. And since the last update, we have also passed a deadline of when all funds must be obligated. Spend a little bit of time on this slide. I want to take a quick moment and acknowledge where we currently are in the process. The city received the first tranche of American Rescue Plan Act funding in June twenty twenty-one, and a second tranche in June twenty twenty-two. City council allocated the funding towards seventy-eight projects and programs, and staff worked to ensure that all of these were obligated prior to the December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four deadline. Looking forward, we will continue implementing the projects to ensure all funds are spent by the December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six deadline, and continue working with our consultant booth management to ensure we have proper, proper documentation. There you have a graph that shows the amount that we've received and the amount that's been encumbered and spent. Luckily, those bars are very, very close to each other on the ARPA. This is the coronavirus relief funds. Uh, these were freed-up general funds, and my one note on this funding is that I would like to continue using this source of funding to pay for our ARP consultant, um, since we are out of the ARPA funds, but we need to continue working with that ARPA consultant to ensure that we're doing all the proper documentation and staying in compliance. And this is just a list of the coronavirus relief fund projects. Uh, this list, along with a list of the ARPA projects, was included in your packet, and was also posted to the message board. So shifting over to ARPA, this slide shows that we have spent and encumbered almost one hundred percent of the eighteen million dollars, and we have some of the projects and programs that spent funding between October and December of last year listed on the screen. And here's a list of that pro- of those projects, and that list continues. Like I said, we had seventy-eight altogether. And then this is just a categorization of the different strategic goals that that funding went to, toward. These next few slides are a few info snacks that I've put together, just showing where this money went to. Almost two million dollars towards home repair and rehab tree removal programs. Then I'll just go ahead and cycle through these in the interest of time, so that we can really get to the, the direction that I'm seeking today. This is the recommended reallocation. This first table is the funding, or, or the projects that have some funding available. And the second table are the projects that we are recommending that that funding go toward. Starting out with those that have available funding. Got to catch up.
Yay.
Um, yes, so we're zeroing out these line items for the projects that came in below the budgeted estimates. The total amount is about twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. And switching over to those that were recommending receive funding. The first one is a minimal amount to the public Wi-Fi in the parks project to cover the cost of wireless service through the end of December twenty twenty-six. This project installed Wi-Fi in City Park, Plaza Park, Children's Park, Dunbar Park, Conway Park, and the downtown mobility hub. The project came in below the original budget, so we had previously reduced the allocation, but upon further analysis, it looks like I reduced it a little too much, so we need to add some funding back to it. We are recommending that the majority of the available funding go toward the rental and utility assistance program that city council approved with BR three T last December. Through the first month and a half of this program, BR three T has distributed over seventy thousand dollars in assistance to over twenty households in our community. My recommendation is to amend the contract with BR three T with a not-to-exceed amount, and any additional funds from ARPA projects could be directed to that purpose, without needing to bring the agreement back to council each time. Next steps is to bring back a resolution with the reallocation at your next meeting. We'll also bring back an amended agreement with BR three T with a not-to-exceed amount that would provide the additional funding. A third item will extend our contract with Booth Consulting to continue the documentation process and ensure continued compliance. There are those tables once again. The direction I am seeking this afternoon is if council is okay with the proposed reallocation of American Rescue Plan funding. And before I conclude, I do want to take a moment and thank the mayor and council for the direction they have provided throughout this process. I also want to acknowledge the staff who have identified projects and programs that help the community and who have the responsibility of implementing those projects. We still have more work to do, but I want to acknowledge the efforts that allowed us to meet last year's important deadline. I'll now be happy to answer any questions and receive council direction.
Before that, Mayor, could I say one thing?
Go ahead.
Of course, Mr. Meagle thanked everybody else, and I want to just thank Mr. Meagle.
We need to thank Mr. Meagle.
I mean, he's taken this on in addition to his other duties, and with no real manual work in terms of just the compliance aspect, and ensuring we got these done, so I want to give major shout-out and kudos to him as well, so.
Absolutely. He's taken this on and done a fabulous job. And, um, part of that is, when there's a dollar left over, where can we put that dollar? I love that. So that's great. So the questions that we have, uh, and counsel, I'm gonna ask you both of these at the same time, and I'll get to you, Ms. Garza, go back, we were in the right place. No, back up, one slide. There we go. Um, is the compliance anything we need to make a decision on? Are there dollars that we need to determine?
We will have a contract renewal coming back to council.
Okay, so that'll be at a later date?
Yes.
Okay, so counsel, are we good with giving back the hundred fifty-seven and eighty, and then the twenty-eight thousand plus, um, for rental, utili- I'm sorry, rental and utility assistance through BR three T? That's where we've assigned the others. I'm gonna go around the table with this after I hear from Ms. Garza.
Um, my question, I'm gonna say yes to both, but my question is just for the BR three T. With this funding source being ARPA, that's the less restrictive application, right?
Correct.
Versus the, okay, just wanted to make sure. Um, yeah, I'm good on both.
Okay, this is not a vote. This is our preference as to whether we want to see this come back for a formal vote. Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez?
Um, yes, but I just wanted some clarification. So we're also giving direction, so the contract will be written as a not-to-exceed, so if we do find a couple extra dollars somewhere else, we're not going through this whole process again.
Correct, so that we're not, yeah, bringing it back every quarter if we find additional funding.
All right, yeah, I'm a yes to both questions.
Thank you, and thanks for making that. I was gonna say that, and then I forgot, so that was a good catch. Mr. Scott? Yes and yes. Sal Gonzalez, yes and yes. Uh, Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And I'm a yes and yes. And Mr. Mendoza? Yes and yes, okay. So, please proceed.
All right, thank you.
Uh, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Trevino, let's read item three.
The city council will convene a legislative session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Government Code, A, Section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, consultation with attorney to receive legal advice regarding, one, matters related to various contracts for the city's provision of emergency medical services, and two, the matter of Whisper Master Community LP versus City of San Marcos, cause number twenty-four dash twenty-nine-seventeen filed in Hays County District Court, and possible settlement offer be Section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two, real property, and Section five-five-one-point-zero-eight-seven, economic development, to deliberate the possible purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property and possible economic development incentives for Project AVSF.
I'm looking for a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez. Ms. Trevino?
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Sal Gonzalez? Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza? And Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez?
Aye.
Motion five-six to zero.
Okay, we are going into the executive session at five twenty-four. Do a bio break if you need it. From our executive session, uh, that we ended but did not complete at five fifty-eight. We are next, to the next item on our agenda, Ms. Trevino, which is Q and A, and no one has signed up. Is that correct?
That's correct, ma'am.
All right, then, uh, being no further business on the agenda, I will close and adjourn our work session. Uh, we need to let the folks do some changeover, so we will start our six o'clock meeting at six oh five. Sorry to be late.